All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the April 10th, 2023 Hilliard City Council Regular Meeting to Order. First, we have our invocation by Mr. Marsh or Councilmember Marsh, and then we will have Ms. Hale will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead.
Lord, during this time, many of our fellow Hilliard residents are celebrating Passover, the beginning of the Easter season, and the month of Ramadan. Regardless of religion or no religion at all, we are all celebrating the season of rebirth with the arrival of spring. The words of Pope Francis were, "Many think differently, feel differently, seeking God or meeting God in different ways." In this crowd, in this range of religions, there is only one certainty that we have for all: We are children of God. We should not stop praying for dialogue and collaborating with those who think differently. May these words extend beyond the realm of religion and include our conversations here this evening and be a guiding principle in all of our interactions with our fellow neighbors. Amen.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Carrier?
I'm here.
Ms. Cottone?
Here.
Ms. Hale? Mr. Marsh?
Here.
Mr. Teeter?
Here.
Vice President Vermillion?
Here.
President Tarazi?
Here.
All right. Council has copies of the March 27th, 2023 Special and Executive Session and Regular Meeting Minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. Board of Zoting Appeals, Peggy Hale?
Nothing to report.
Destination Hilliard, Cynthia Vermillion?
Nothing to report.
Environmental Sustainability Commission, Pete Marsh?
Once again, reminder Saturday is the Earth Day collections at the fairgrounds.
All right. Morpsy?
No update, thank you.
Planning and Zoning Commission, Peggy Hale?
No update.
All right. Public Arts Commission, there's no report right now. Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission? Shade Tree Commission?
No report.
Aging and Place Committee?
No report.
And there's nothing from other commissions. Okay. We have one proclamation tonight regarding Arab American Heritage Month. Mr. Youssef Elzain, would you like to introduce the members of the Hilliard community that are here with you this evening to accept the proclamation? And if you would, please state your name and address for the record when you come up to the podium.
Good evening, and don't take it wrongly. I'm from Dayton, Ohio. My name is Youssef Elzain from Dayton, Ohio. But please allow me to thank Mr. Marsh for the invocation. It's beautiful words, and I hope that many people hear you. And the way we ended the Pledge of Allegiance, we all look for liberty and justice for all, and I hope that that all includes our Arab American, Muslim American community. Again, my name is Youssef Elzain. I reached out to the council president, Mr. Tarazi, to see if he can honor us with the proclamation. And the response was was quick, that working with thee, that it will it will happen. And it's my pleasure to introduce many of Hilliard residents, and I'll start with Hussein. And come up and introduce yourselves, as you do a better job than.
Mr. Tarazi, I'm counsel. I would like to introduce to you first myself as Hussein Salah Al Magari. I'm a Hilliard resident since 1998, and I will start with introducing the guest here: Attorney Mazen Rasool, Sakhrul Kresha, Leif Salah, Abdul Nasir Joub, Mr. Jabril Shalash, Jumana Al Tahir, and Aliya Al Joradat. And they're all from City of Hilliard residents, and they've been here for a while, and we enjoy being residents here and enjoying the city, living and business and actually, you know, also in the mosque and worship too. So we're happy to be residents of City of Hilliard.
Thank you very much. We're happy to have you. Let me go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, culture, and whereas since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions, they have added strength to our great democracy through their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed. And whereas recent events underscore the need for more efforts to bring out about lasting institutional societal change that is desperately needed in our country to maximize freedom and justice for all. And whereas the City of Hilliard uplifts values and embraces our Arab American residents, community leaders, business owners, professionals, and others who promote the well-being, education, awareness, and knowledge of the many facets of the Arab American community as part of our whole inclusive community. Now therefore, I, Omar Tarazi, president of Hilliard City Council, and on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as National Arab American Heritage Month in the City of Hilliard, and encourage the community to observe this month through appropriate program ceremonies and activities that foster awareness and appreciation of the contributions of Arab Americans have made in our society. Thank you very much. I'll do it again. Do it again. I think somebody was moving. Just kidding. You bet. Thanks for coming. All right. So we'll be moving on with the rest of the agenda for tonight. Are there any changes to this agenda? Hearing none, we will move to the public portion of this meeting. Is there anybody signed up?
Sir, you have a consent agenda item?
Yeah. So there's one item on the consent agenda for council approval, which is a C1 and C2 liquor permit for 4142 Main Street, the Carlos Pizza. No objections were received from staff. Does anyone on council wish to move this item to the regular agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, entertain a roll call and motion, well, a motion and second to approve the consent agenda item.
So moved.
Motioned and seconded, so roll call, please.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
All right. This is the public portion of the meeting. Has anyone signed up to speak? If anybody would like to speak, they can sign up and let us know. Otherwise, we move on to the business of council. There is one second reading, public hearing this evening. Will the clerk please read 23-05 by title only?
Appropriating funds in order to issue a net profit tax refund and authorizing expenditure.
All right. Has anyone, well, first off, this has been motioned and seconded already, right? Let's see, it's a second reading.
This is the second reading, sir.
Yep, okay. Has anyone signed up to speak on this matter? Does council have any further questions on this particular appropriation? No further questions? Okay. Well, will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 23-05?
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes. All right. So now we will have another motion and second to approve it as amended. So anybody move?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. All right. So roll call, unless there's discussion, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Okay. The resolution 23-r-21 has passed and will take effect at the earliest date allowed by law. All right. Will the clerk please read 23-r-22 by title only?
Adopting the city's plan of operation and governance for the electric aggregation program.
Is there a council member who would like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded by Mr. Marsh. Does council have any questions? Is there? Okay. So no questions? I don't see any. Ordinance 23-06, hearing will be held at the next meeting of council on April 24th, 2023. All right. Will the clerk please read 23-r-21 by title only?
Appointing blank to the Big Darby Accord Advisory Panel.
Is there a motion?
I would like to move to appoint Brian Gara to the Big Darby Accord Advisory Plan Panel.
Is there a second? Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on 23-r-21?
Phil, we have to do a motion to, we have to read the roll call to add Brian Gara, then do a second roll call to accept the amended correct?
Correct.
So the motion then is to amend, to add the name, and we will do the roll call for that at this moment.
I was just being clear for myself.
Yeah, perfect.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes. All right. So now we will have another motion and second to approve it as amended. So anybody move?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. All right. So roll call, unless there's discussion, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes. All right. So now we will have another motion and second to approve it as amended. So anybody move?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. All right. So roll call, unless there's discussion, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes. All right. So now we will have another motion and second to approve it as amended. So anybody move?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. All right. So roll call, unless there's discussion, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Okay. The resolution 23-r-21 has passed and will take effect at the earliest date allowed by law. All right. Will the clerk please read 23-r-22 by title only?
Adopting the city's plan of operation and governance for the electric aggregation program.
Is there a council member who would like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved. Second.
All right. Motioned and seconded. Go ahead.
Good evening, members of council. I wanted to use tonight's formal approval process as an opportunity to introduce to you Rich Saraz from Energy Alliances and allow him to both share some information about Energy Alliances, but also answer questions that you might have about the process moving forward. Included in your packet was a listing of dates and a timeline related to formal steps that we have to take as a community as part of the electric aggregation process. Certainly can entertain discussion and questions about that timeline here this evening, but I just wanted to note that we are currently on track for residents and within Hilliard to see a September start date with an October bill associated with that September. So without any further delay, I wanted to introduce Rich Saraz from Energy Alliances to go through a presentation with you here tonight.
Thank you, council. Rich Saraz from Energy Alliances, here to talk a little bit about the steps that have been taken up to this point for the aggregation, as well as obviously to introduce ourselves and where we kind of fit the entire process, and then where things will go from here. So at Energy Alliances, we currently support more than 40 communities throughout Ohio with their aggregation programs for both gas and electric. It's very common that we start prior to the elections, but you guys did a lot of the hard part of putting it on the ballot and getting that passed. And then really after that point, it comes down to a lot of operational and regulatory and other requirements, and I think that's kind of where we help to fit in, right, is to help navigate all of those things to get you from Election Day to become a certified aggregator to then actually running a program. And last week was another important step for that, was the two public hearings for your plan of operation. So that is a document that I believe you have seen. That that sort of wraps up, you know, what your program is supposed to look like. It doesn't set the prices, it doesn't, you know, set any of the, any of the sort of details, but it does set the framework about what it is that you want to do. That, I will admit, that document is pretty vanilla. We always suggest to do it as such because, you know, that is the document that you're voting on tonight to move forward, to have an aggregation from your plan of operation. So by keeping it pretty simple and checking the regulatory boxes, you can cover then some of the other framework in the next steps, as far as pricing and what things look like. Whereas if you deviate too far from your plan of operation, you got to start from scratch, right, because that's, that's obviously what you voted on. So, you know, the next step at this point, you know, hopefully you vote tonight to approve that that plan of operation, and, you know, I guess we'll go through some of the timeline there next, sort of jumping ahead a little bit. (pause) That'd be helpful. (cough) Yeah, I got it. Thanks. I just need to scratch net. I got it. Deal. (pause) So before we even jump into a lot of the details, we like to start here, right, because even as we go through the process and get pricing and then your residents see pricing, there's always some confusion about what does the aggregation actually do? So what does it do and what does it not do? So, you know, we look at sort of three phases of energy and electric, and the start is, you know, the generators. So those are the companies that their sole job is to generate the energy, right? So for 100 years, that company that was the generator and the company that brought the electrons to your house were the same company. But, you know, almost 20 years ago, here in Ohio, that deregulated, right? So you have the companies at the top who generate, and in the middle, in this case would be AEP Ohio, their sole job is to move the electrons. So for those who decide to take AEP's default generation service, they're taking it from market. So AEP goes out to auction, and we'll talk a little bit about that on a future slide too. They go out to auction, and they ask the market, hey, what are you willing to charge us for generation services? You know, they don't generate the power themselves. Again, they let the market dictate what that is. So that's at the top. So when you take AEP's default generation service, you're letting AEP say, okay, this is what the price of your generation supply will be. But in the case here of with Hilliard, you've decided, hey, we want to explore aggregation, and how can we potentially, you know, help negotiate on the residents' behalf the generation supply? So really, you know, you're buying there and renegotiating at the top. So you have the top is the supply, the middle is the distribution. Again, that's the utility company, no matter who you take care of your supply from, and then all of us there at the bottom as the end-use customer. So, you know, there in the middle, you'll continue to have AEP be the supply, be the distribution company, they'll continue to take care of all the billing, nothing changes there. So as far as, you know, once the aggregation is up and running to the residents, they'll still call AEP if they have any issues with outages, any issues with bills, really any issues at all. It just becomes a line item on the bill that changes for them, that they would pay, at least those participants in the program would pay, the generation supply rate with the aggregation instead of paying AEP's default rates. So who are we? I think I kind of touched on that a little bit already, right? So we work with multiple communities throughout the state, and, you know, we look at ourselves more as an operations organization. So we do that from taking calls from your residents. You know, we always say that, you know, we want the team here to be, you know, dangerous enough to answer basic questions, you know, people, especially, you know, you folks as elected officials, you get people coming up to you, I'm sure, on the street, at the store, asking you about things, so you should be dangerous enough to understand how the program works. But, you know, we want to take the hard questions, right? So if questions come here and then, and the office staff can answer those, you know, great. But if anything becomes difficult or something they don't understand, you know, they can come right to us. So we have, you know, folks in our office, at least, you know, three at any point when the, when the phone rings, we've got three people that answer with, we try to answer within two. For some reason, it gets to a fourth ring, there's another three people. So we have kind of tiers of things that come in for people to be able to call us. They can also get to us through email, and, you know, a function that we've used a lot here recently is chat on our website. So, you know, I, we looked at ourselves, and I look at myself as a consumer. A lot of times, you're trying to do a lot of things, you know, with work, you don't have time or don't want to pick up the phone, so we created a chat feature on our website. So we try to give your residents and small businesses a few different channels to be able to reach out to us, you know, for questions. And a big part, again, of what we do is taking care of all your regulatory requirements, so we'll make sure that you're always certified with the state. There's multiple things that have to happen every year, there's stuff that has to happen every quarter, we make sure to take care of all that. And then the last bullet I have there is something that you'll see definitely from us every quarter is a performance report. So even if we do a deal that's two years long, it's not as if we do that and say, okay, well, we'll see you in two years. Every single quarter, you will get a report from us to show you how the program is doing. So constantly, obviously, keeping, you know, us honest that the program is going as expected. You get to see exactly how it's going, and it allows us to see, for whatever reason, if things aren't going as expected, that we can pick up that, you know, pretty quickly and use that tool to see if we have to change things. We have used that in the past with communities that, I don't think we're going to have that situation now because of where AEP rates are going to be, but we've had situations before down by us where, you know, the utility rates had fallen a lot in a two-year, well, really in a one-year period, and we found within the first six months that we had two programs that were not saving money. But because we had those reports, we went back out to the suppliers, we're able to renegotiate on the community's behalf, and then they were quickly able to save money. So, you know, for me, those quarterly reports are really an important part of what we do because it keeps us looking exactly on how the program is going, you know, really from the first month all the way through the end.
Excuse me. I have two questions.
Please.
So on your last slide, it says that you manage programs for 40 communities. What is the population range of the communities that you represent?
So we represent some that have 25,000, and then we have, our smallest one is the village of Moscow in Claremont County. There are 60 people in the program. So we arrange a program from less than 100 people to tens of thousands.
You said 25,000 was your highest?
Yep.
Okay. And would you add Hilliard into the other communities for aggregation, or is Hilliard by itself?
So we would look at Hilliard by itself, right? So I think sometimes, and it's a great question, so there are some times where people think that there are power in numbers, and there are to a certain extent. However, when it comes to energy, it's not as if we're, you know, going to Costco and we're trying to buy in bulk, right? So the way that energy is priced is based on how the residents here in Hilliard use energy, right? People use energy at different times of day, different times of year, it all kind of gets averaged out and they get a price. So whether you have, again, 60 people, like in the one community, or 25,000, it's all going to come down to how people use energy here. And when you, when you group lots of communities together, somebody's always going to subsidize somebody else. Because again, every community, every person is not exactly the same. How I use energy is different than how you use energy, you know, and how other council members use energy. So again, you know, we've been able to take this, we'll sort of say, concept of grouping people, but still letting communities run their own programs because of how many communities we have and suppliers wanting to work with us and how we do things. We've been able to take that power of numbers while not having any community either subsidize somebody else or give up their own rights as an aggregator, because that's something else you'll see too with some, with some communities, when, when you group them together in consortiums, you actually join their group. So then you're a part of their program, they're not running your program. So we would look at Hilliard by itself to see how, you know, how it would really compete against AEP's standard rates.
And is there a difference in negotiating for Hilliard, which is on the larger side versus, I mean, is that going to be a leap or is that something that's comfortable for you or?
Oh, it's completely comfortable for us. I mean, dealing with communities that have, you know, tens of thousands of people is not a big deal for us at all. We do it all the time.
Thanks.
So, you know, AEP, and I think it was important, and I wish the utility by us would have done the same thing, but I know AEP came out here recently saying that they're expecting a big rate increase. Again, the utility by us has not done this, and that's caused a little bit of trouble for us because we're seeing this increase come, and convincing the residents that the deals we're showing now are good has been a challenge, so it's been nice that AEP has done that. So right now, we're anticipating, starting on the June bill, that residents' rates will go up to around 11 and a half cents, where right now, they're just a little bit over seven cents. So this is a pretty significant increase that those who take AEP Ohio's default service will see, you know, it's a big jump.
And then, and the office staff can answer those, you know, great. But if anything becomes difficult or something they don't understand, you know, they can come right to us. So we have, you know, folks in our office, at least, you know, three at any point when the, when the phone rings, we've got three people that answer with, we try to answer within two. For some reason it gets to a fourth ring, there's another three people. So we have kind of tiers of, of things that come in for people to be able to call us. They can also get to us through email. And, you know, a function that we've used a lot here recently is chat on our website. So, you know, I, we looked at ourselves, and I look at myself as a consumer. A lot of times you're trying to do a lot of things, you know, with work, you don't have time or don't want to pick up the phone. So we, we created a chat feature on our website. So we try to give your residents and small businesses a few different channels to be able to reach out to us, you know, for questions. And a big part again of what we do is taking care of all your regulatory requirements. So we'll make sure that you're always certified with the state. There's multiple things that have to happen every year. There's stuff that has to happen every quarter. We make sure to take care of all that. And then the last bullet I have there is something that you'll see definitely from us every quarter is a performance report. So even if we do a deal that's two years long, it's not as if we do that and say, okay, well, we'll see you in, in two years. Every single quarter you will get a report from us to show you how the program is doing. So constantly obviously keeping, you know, us honest that the program is, is going as expected. You get to see exactly how it's going and it allows us to see for whatever reason if things aren't going as expected, that we can pick up that, you know, pretty quickly and, and use that tool to see if we have to change things. We have used that in the past with communities that, I don't think we're going to have that situation now because of where AEP rates are going to be, but we've had situations before down by us where the, you know, the utility rates had fallen a lot in a two-year, really in a one-year period. And we found within the first six months that we had two programs that were not saving money. But because we had those reports, we went back out to the suppliers, were able to renegotiate on the community's behalf, and then they were quickly able to save money. So, you know, for me, those quarterly reports are really an important part of, of what we do because it keeps us looking exactly on how the program is, is going, you know, really from the, the first month all the way through the end.
Excuse me?
Sure.
I have two questions.
Please.
So on your last slide, it says that you manage programs for 40 communities. What is the population range of the communities that you represent?
So we represent some that have 25,000. And then we have, our smallest one is the village of Moscow in Claremont County. There are 60 people in the program. So we, we arrange a program from less than 100 people to tens of thousands.
You said 25,000 was your highest?
Yep.
Okay. And would you add Hilliard into the other communities for aggregation or is Hilliard by itself?
So we would look at Hilliard by itself. So, so I think sometimes, and it's, and it's a great question. So it, you know, there are, there are some times where people think that there are power in numbers, and there are to a certain extent. However, when it comes to energy, it's not as if we're, you know, going to Costco and we're trying to buy in bulk, right? So the way that energy is priced is based on how the residents here in Hilliard use energy, right? People use energy at different times of day, different times of year. It all kind of gets averaged out and they, they get a price. So whether you have, again, 60 people like in the one community or 25,000, it's all going to come down to how people use energy here. And when you, when you group lots of communities together, somebody's always going to subsidize somebody else. Because again, every community, every person is not exactly the same. How I use energy is different than how you use energy, you know, and then how other council members use energy. So again, you know, we've been able to take this, we'll sort of say, concept of grouping people, but still letting communities run their own programs because of how many communities we have and, and suppliers wanting to work with us and how we do things. We've been able to take that power of numbers while not having any community either subsidize somebody else or give up their own rights a, as an aggregator. Because that's something else you'll see too with some, with some communities when, when you group them together in consortiums, you actually join their group. So then you're a part of their program. They're not running your program. So we would look at Hilliard by itself to see how, you know, how it would really compete against AEP's standard rates.
And is there a difference in negotiating for Hilliard, which is on the larger side versus, I mean, is that going to be a leap or is that something that's comfortable for you or?
Oh, it's, it's completely comfortable for us. I mean, dealing with communities that have, you know, tens of thousands of people is, is not a big deal for us at all. We do it all the time.
Thanks.
So, you know, AEP, and, and I think it was important, and I wish the utility by us would have done the same thing, but I know AEP came out here recently saying that they're expecting a big rate increase. Again, the utility by us has not done this, and that's caused a little bit of trouble for us because we're seeing this increase come. And convincing the residents that the deals we're showing now are good has been a challenge. So it's been nice that AEP has done that. So right now we're anticipating, starting on the June bill, that residents, residents' rates will go up to around 11 and a half cents. Where right now they're, they're just a little bit over seven cents. So this is a pretty significant increase that, that those who take AEP Ohio's default service will see. You know, it's a big jump. So, you know, this is where I applaud you that you've, you've taken the steps to, to try to help mitigate that. Yes, people can shop on their own, right? And they'll still be able to shop on their own when there's a program, but the state statistics show that roughly only 20 to 25% of people choose to do anything. So that, you know, that's 70% of people who in most cases sit on the sidelines, right? So by running an aggregation program, you know, you're going to be able to bring savings to really that 70% of residents who, who up to this point have, have not done anything. And in most cases we find they've not done anything because it's, they're confused, right? They're, they're confused, they're, they're concerned about what it means to their service. I'm actually in a community that doesn't have an aggregation program. And we, we moved houses four years ago, so I had to shop. And I do this every day. I mean, I've been doing it for nearly 20 years and having to go out to the Public Utilities Commission website and find an offer that I found was the right one to take, it's, it's overwhelming. And then I even put the offer that I took into our system at work so that I can remember when that thing comes up for expiration, because if it doesn't, well, then you can get hit with, with big fees. And we were talking with people constantly now who they had deals, they were, they were paying four or five cents a year or two ago, which were great deals, and now they're paying 10 cents, 16 cents. We talked to somebody who was over 20 cents. So again, I, I see why 70% of people have, have not shopped because it could be very overwhelming. And that's again, where the aggregation comes in to bring that value add to your residents to, to try to make the shopping, you know, a lot easier for them to do and, and to put up some of the guardrails that you don't see when people shop on their own. So again, you know, a big increase coming to AEP starting in June. And then, you know, hopefully we can get your program up just not long after that for people to be able to save some pretty significant dollars by doing nothing. And then here we have, you know, a timeline. It's a, it's a fairly, sorry.
I haven't seen any numbers. I see here we're saving money, but I haven't seen any money, anything that shows we're saving any money. Do you happen to have anything on that with you in one of these PowerPoints?
So we don't. So we, we'd not been able to go out for pricing yet. So since you're not an aggregator or not certified to aggregate, AEP Ohio will not even release the data to be able to go out and to get pricing for you. So none of that can happen until you're, until you're certified, which will, assuming that you vote yes tonight, will happen in about a month, we'll look to file those.
So what happens if we vote tonight, yes, and then it comes in higher or just about close to what AEP has right now?
Yeah, so, so let's talk about that a little bit. So tonight is just about approving your plan of operation.
Okay.
Again, that's that document. So that's step one. So then the, the plan will be if, if we can get everything together, we have pretty much all the documents except for your approved resolution tonight, we'll file that with the Public Utilities Commission. So that will be, the plan will be to do that tomorrow. So then the Public Utilities Commission has 30 days to speak up. They never do. So according to law, on day 31, you're an aggregator. So that gets us to May 11th. So that's around May 11th, you'll become a certified aggregator. At that point, we're able to then go to AEP and ask them for the data for all of the residents inside of the city limits. We will then take that data, we, we scrub out all the personal information, we will then send it to suppliers and we will ask them to give us pricing back. We'll run an RFP on your behalf to get pricing back. So right now the plan would be, we'll come back on June 12th with pricing. So it would be at that time that you will have the chance to vote on the price and consider a, a price for your aggregation. So let's just say the market goes completely haywire in the next two months and the prices that we get back from suppliers is above 11 and a half cents. You do nothing, right? You, you don't sign a contract, right? Because at that point, having an aggreg, you'll still be certified as an aggregator, but having a program, you just, you wouldn't do it. So, you know, at least now you, you'll have the opportunity to go through that process. I feel pretty certain we're going to be able to find you something well lower than 11 and a half cents. I mean, we've, we've now, here recently, within the last month, Worthington and Delaware, both cities that had programs that start within the next two months, and in, in both cases, we'll, we'll call it seven cents, each a little bit different, but the average was around seven cents. So it's pretty substantial savings compared to AEP's expected rate. And even seven cents is a little bit cheaper than what the utility is right now. So again, we'll see what happens with the market in the next two months, but feel rather certain that we're going to be able to offer your residents substantial savings and you'll get the opportunity to, to discuss and see pricing in, right now the expectation is in June.
Okay. And then another question I had, very helpful. Why would we do a three-year deal and not just a one-year deal?
So some of that is, a, a big part about the aggregation is risk, right? And trying to mitigate risk. So you could do a one-year deal, right? But what we're seeing right now, you know, in, in the market is we feel like with a two-year deal, and, and this is a discussion that, that Delaware had. So if we, let's just say we could find an aggregation price at seven cents, okay? We don't know AEP's price beyond May of 2024. So beyond a 12-month term, we don't know. But, but if I, if I came to you with a seven-cent price, knowing that the utility has been a little bit over, around seven cents to a little bit over seven cents the last 12 months. If we said we can guarantee your residents will pay less money the next two years than they paid in the last year, do you sign up for that? And I think the answer is probably yes. Because you can give them a guarantee that the utility is not giving them, right? People have always had this false sense of comfort that the utility was going to, you know, be the low rate, right, and protect that. But as we see, that, that didn't happen. So we can absolutely look at a 12-month deal, right? But the deals now that we've been seeing, the sort of, the sweet spot, we'll call it, has sort of been around that 12-month term, the 24-month term. Because the 12-month prices are a little bit cheaper than 24-month, and it'll actually end there a little bit cheaper than the 36-month. So it gives you some certainty for the next two years. It can almost give you guaranteed lower bills than you've had the last year. And yet lock you in for a term that is not too long, right? It's not too short, not too long. The, the 24-month has seemed to be that, that nice sweet spot that if the market does decide to fall, say, you know, end of year two or into three, we're not locked in for so long that we can't then take advantage of lower prices. But, but again, right now 24 months has, has been, you know, has seemed to have been that sweet spot of being able to help to manage risk.
Thank you.
If I could, I just wanted to remind everybody, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this was never intended to be a cost-saving. It's, it's coincidental that AEP has raised their rates and that we get a better deal now, but that was never the promise.
All right, we'll continue with your, and then we can do a discussion questions once you're finished.
Sure. So then, you know, assuming that you vote in the middle of June, right? So then at that point, we would have opt-out materials. So these are the materials that are sent to eligible residents inside of the city limits. So who are the eligible residents? It's those who are currently taking AEP's default service. So if somebody's shopping with a third party, they would not receive an opt-out letter. Businesses are also eligible for the, for the aggregation program as long as they use less than 700,000 KWH. It's a fair amount of energy. So, so I would assume most of your small businesses here in the city limits would be eligible. So those are really the two things, are, are people who are with AEP's default generation service and businesses using less than 700,000. So all of those people will get a letter in the mail, likely sometime in, in June, at the end of June. And the letter will state at that point, it'll have the price, it'll have the term, all the details that, that will, will iron out. And it will give the people the opportunity, you know, if, if you like this rate, if you like what you have to see, you like the terms, they get a copy of the terms and conditions. If you like everything and you do nothing, you'll automatically get enrolled into the program. If you don't like it, well, you have the chance to opt out, right? So there's, so there's still this, again, I call it kind of an archaic thing of a 21-day opt-out window. Because our programs never have termination fees, so people can leave anytime they want. But going back to how Ohio code was written, there's a 21-day opt-out window because you would have given people roughly three weeks to say, if they had termination fees on them, you would have given them three weeks to get out. So at the end of, we still use the 21-day opt-out window. At the end of the 21 days, anybody who has not responded to the opt-out, the supplier would say, okay, they're giving, at that point giving consent to be part of the program. They would then be enrolled into the program at that time. And that, you know, and that sort of starts your, your pool of, of the initial customers after they, after they get, they get that letter. So right now, again, the plan is for them to get that letter sometime in, in Jan, in, in June, with the opt-out period ending sometime in July. If, you know, if, if, we don't have a lot of wiggle room on, on those dates, right? But we'll, you know, we'll look to see what we can do. If there's any way we could push it up at all, you know, we will, and see if we can get the program started a, a month sooner. But, but, you know, this timeline here is, is, is rather tight and I think as you see from some of those, from those things, they're just regulatory dates, right? The, the PUCO has, again, they have 30 days to, to approve your application, they have 11 days to review your opt-out materials, you have to run a 21-day opt-out period. You know, th- those are things we can't change at all. But, you know, we'll, we'll do everything and we have up to this point, you know, made sure we had everything lined up so that the day you're available to do something, you know, we, we move and, and get it done. So, you know, right, right now, at least based on this timeline, the program would start on your, with the September metering date, which would then be your October bill. But, you know, looking at that timeline and if we, we can potentially speed some things up, I mean, I would love to get it started on your August metering date, which would then be your September bill, obviously a month sooner, so that, that the folks are not hit with that 11 and a half cents, or at least they're going to be at least one or two months, but not, hopefully to avoid the third and fourth month and, and beyond if possible. So, you know, again, we've, we've, I've said a lot, I usually do. You know, we kind of give a, a timeline, you know, I appreciate questions, but you know, definitely with, you know, want to answer your questions, want to make sure you, we have an understanding on what next steps are and, and what may be expected.
All right. Well, does anybody have questions first? All right. So I'll go my questions. So just to make sure I fully understand 100%, this 21-day window versus three years that you have in the program, you have in the paperwork, that's all basically you're saying ignore that, it's, they can drop out at any time.
Yes.
And that's purely for, to comply with the code? Is that accurate?
Well, the, the 20 days is a set window. Because if they don't respond by the 21st day, they would get enrolled into the program. So you may have somebody that said, I don't want to be part of the program. They still, at least for initially not being enrolled, they would have to respond within that 20-day, 21-day period. But yes, if it got to day 30 and they said, oh, I don't like this program, yes, they could, they could drop out at that time. And, and the language in the plan of operation, the three years, that's just the way Ohio code is written for right now. But you can't really ignore the 21-day period because something will happen if they don't.
They get signed up, but the next day, they, or a week later, a month later, they can always quit and there's no penalty.
Correct. No term, yep. They can leave, and, and then it's the same thing, people could enter the program at any time. So all the programs we've run will only be with suppliers who will allow people to come into the program. So let's say when the letters go out in, in, in June, somebody's with a supplier. So they don't have the opportunity to get an opt-out letter. And let's say they expire in July and the renewal rate they get is 10 cents, but the aggregation rate is seven cents. Well, they can decide to end the contract they have with that other supplier and they can decide to opt in to the aggregation program. So again, we'll only work with suppliers who will let people leave the program at any time without fee. And we'll only let, work with those who will let people enter the program at any time during the program, also without a fee. So people can, you know, come and go as many times as they want.
I noticed on your website you have, I don't want to say most, but quite a number of cities it looks like you have offering both a brown and a green plan at the same time. Is that accurate? Am I reading it correctly?
That, that's correct. Yep. We have, we have some who have the default as green and the opt-in would be a brown. We have some that have the reverse. We have some that have just one, just the other, you know, depending on the community. You know, we, we offer several different flavors of that. I will say for you, your default has to be green, because I believe that's the way, and I'm sorry, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, but I believe that has to be, your default has to be green because that is what was presented to the voters for the aggregation was at least your default option has to be offset with renewable energy.
Right. But is the plan that you've put forward, it doesn't mention anything about offering the public multiple plans?
No. So again, the plan now doesn't, right? So we, we, we will address that later on, right? So when we, when we do the pricing itself, then we'll go through and present options and to see what may be there. But again, it's, it's not on the plan because let's just say the plan said you have to do a green and you have to do a brown. Well, maybe three years from now, maybe the brown is not economical at all, right? Who knows what happens? Well, if your plan says you have to do both, well, maybe it doesn't make sense to do both three years from now. But by not being, you know, completely specific, you have some flexibility later on to be able to look at the different flavors of what to offer your residents, except that the default has to be green.
And so when will that decision be made?
The, so that, that'll be presented to you on, on the 12th, on June 12th.
Okay, go ahead. I do have a couple more questions, but go ahead.
This flows with what your question, what your questions. You had mentioned that you're going to do quarterly reports and you're going to look at them and measure your metric. What's your metric? Is your metric of success lower rate than the current AEP rate? Is that what you're looking at?
Correct. Yep. So it's, it's, it's how is the aggregation faring compared to the AEP rate?
So is there a way that we can for our plan, put a trigger in that if, if two quarters where we're in our plan and it's higher than the AEP rate, which I assume is brown energy, that the entire plan opts out and we start over? Is there a trigger we can put in there in our plan to say, hey, this isn't working, we've committed to a longer rate, but we're way over? Because that's what happened to Hilliard years ago. If you lived in Hilliard years ago, you had a gas rate that was way higher than everybody else. And these folks couldn't get out of it, it was locked in. And it was really not a good thing. So is there a way we can trigger our plan that if there is a quarter or two that's bad, we can not just rely on you to reevaluate and try to get a better rate, but have everybody systemically opt out?
Could you? Sure. Right? Would you find a supplier to take that deal? I, I would, I'm not, I'm not sure anybody would.
Yeah.
Right? And even, you know, so contractually, you know, what you have with a supplier, because you would enter, the, the city would enter into a master service agreement with a supplier, at least from a, from a city perspective, this, the city could not come out and say, well, don't take this program. You as individual people, I believe could, right? And I think there are strategic ways to, with the performance reports, right, to, to let the public know, you know, where things are. But, but I think you would be very hard-pressed to find a supplier who, who will take that and then just end the program. I will also say, I, I think the, the market as a whole, there are some things that happened up north recently with, with people sending programs back.
Yeah, they, they just left.
Yes.
Left the market.
And, and that, that shook the market to its core. And I think part of the reason why the rates are, you know, that 11 and a half cents is, is, is part of that reason. Because in the middle of, of a, of a term, or at least months before it's supposed to end, you had a supplier send hundreds of thousands of people back to the market. So, you know, I, I even wonder how would the Public Utilities Commission look at a contract like that or a deal like that because?
Because it would be good for the consumer?
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with you on that, right? I think sometime, again, and I understand, like, sometimes the policy I think doesn't protect the consumer, but right now I think, I think the market, the Ohio market itself is, is very sensitive to, you know, to that. And I'm, I'm, I'm kind of interested on how, how it would react, right? From both a regulatory thing, because there, because there's things in the market right now that they're proposing that if, if you are an aggregator with more than 5,000 people and you send your people back to the utility, that you actually could not aggregate for another year. Well, obviously the city of Hilliard is more than 5,000 people, right? So there, there are, there are things still being worked out here in the state from, from a policy and, and from a PUCO perspective to change some of the rules, right, on, on, to do what you're asking to do. So could you? Sure. You know, whether a supplier take, you know, decides to take the risk on that, that would be, to be determined, right, by us going out to, out to market.
Go ahead.
I want to tag President Tarazi's question. Whenever he was talking about aggregating brown and green, you said you wouldn't recommend rating the brown into the plan because at some point it might not be worth it. Who determines not worth it? And I didn't exactly understand what you meant by that.
Sure. So some of the not worth it, I guess initially would be us, right? But again, that would, that would come to you, right? You get to vote on everything, right? And our, our job is to make suggestions on what, you know, what you could do. But eventually it would, it would come to you. So when I say it, it doesn't make it worth it, or, you know, if the financial things didn't work out, you know, we may come to you and say, hey, you know, here's the utility rate, or here's the green rate, and then here's the brown rate, and then start to break it down for your own where it may not make sense to, you know, to do it or not do it. So yeah, it initially starts with us, but it does, you know, and, and with you because you would have the option to, to look at it.
So with your quarterly reports, is that something that you give to staff and they pass along to us, or is that something that council's not involved in?
So traditionally we work everything, we would work everything through the city manager's office.
Okay. And then you would bring the green and the brown rates to the city manager, her appointee, and then they would decide, or then they would bring that to council?
So in most cases, yes, when we would get them back, so say sometime that, end of May, we would get pricing back, you know, and I would likely call a meeting to, to talk it through, right, to see what, what we have, what we've got, and to, you know, discuss some of the options, right? And then at that point decide, you know, how best to present it to you, right? I will, like, this is, this is our first time working with you as a council, right? So we, we're all still learning from each other. So we have some communities where, you know, we know that they want us to just say, what do they believe is the best, you know, what do we believe is the best offer, right? And we do that. We have others that, you know, they'd like to see more of what are the offers, right, and to go through that. You know, that's what we did in Worthington, right? So we, we brought multiple offers. We tried to protect the market by, you know, more like supplier A, B, and C, you know, kind of some of the stuff, but they wanted to see them, so we saw. So again, you know, I will, I will default, default to the city manager and, and team on how to best speak with you while we're still learning each other on, on what is the best way to commute, communicate information to you.
But right now the plan is to bring both green and brown aggregation numbers to the city initially?
So I would say initially, yeah, green, yes, right? The, the brown, I guess that's to be determined, right? That's something that we would talk about as a team.
Our intent as a, a staff is to bring forward pricing for both green and brown electricity and let council as a group decide how you want to proceed at that June 12th meeting.
Okay. So June 12th, we will see both of those? Okay. And then going forward, we can anticipate seeing both until notified otherwise?
I'm sorry, repeat that question again. I'm not sure I understood.
Oh, so then going forward, if staff decided to drop one, drop the brown, would we be notified?
I think council could take action on something of that nature.
Okay, so if we say we want brown and green, then that will continue until it's brought before council again and council will decide it's not worth it or whatever the right wording is? Okay, thanks.
I have a question. I'm confused. So we took this to the voters for green energy, so now we're saying maybe not green energy or...
No, what we're saying is that they will bring back pricing for green energy, which is what the program requires. But this particular broker also looks at pricing for brown. So assuming that that's a good rate, it allows for an additional option for residents. So they automatically get opted into the green. Then they have choices. They can stay in that, they can opt out and go into the market, or they can, assuming that that brown energy price is competitive, we could have that as another option for them. So assuming it's a good rate, those that want to opt out, it gives them something additional that the city can offer because we've gone out to the market and looked at that as well.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, I do have a couple, I'll go back to my couple of questions. So what's being asked to vote on tonight? By the way, thank you for your time, but I'm going to take a step backward and talk about some of the procedural elements that got us here. Because the resolution calls for, that all deliberations of council and any committee that resulted in those formal actions were in meetings open to the public. That's the resolution. And I have some concerns and I'd like to ask about them, to see if that's actually true. So when we were last here, I'd asked if any council, I'd heard that Cynthia Vermillion had said that she had signed off on what you were going to present. And so I asked if you had, if any council member had any effect or impact on their presentation, and you said no. And then we ended up getting some emails and things. And then from those emails, and this is why I have a question for Ms. Crandall, there was emails that showed that multiple meetings of various variety between certain members of council and both aggregators and staff back and forth during this period of time that a decision is being made on which aggregators to chosen. Is that normal?
Staff met on our own with our list of aggregators and evaluated those separately. I know that Councilmember Vermillion and possibly Councilmember Cottone might have met with one or two of them separate from us, but it did not weigh in at all into our decision-making on who we thought was the best provider.
Did they have a private meeting with Dan?
Any council member that wants to meet with me or one of my leadership team members can, so yes. There were some conversations between Councilmember Vermillion and Dan, between Councilmember Vermillion and me. Again, it did not impact or weigh on our decision of who we chose. But any council member that wants to come and ask staff a question or meet with staff is more than willing.
But to be in the middle of the decision tree and back and forth with these people being considered, meeting with them, meeting then immediately with staff, and then back meeting, that's, and then none of this is open to the public?
That's not exactly how it happened. I can't remember the timeline, but I think, you know, maybe Councilmember Vermillion can...
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
First of all, back on November 10th of 2022, two days after the election, each of us received an email from a company called Sopec. All of us got that email. I chose to respond to them because I thought, okay, I need to start finding out how this process works for my own education. So I responded and I met with them, and so did Councilmember Cottone. And so we got some information that way. At no point in that process did I even go to Dan or Michelle about our meetings. I found out later that they were interviewing, I think, five different companies. I never talked to Dan about those, you know, how his interviews went. He ended up picking energy alliances. I hadn't even heard of them. I hadn't even talked to them. I had absolutely zero input in who city staff picked on handling this aggregation program, zero. And Rich Saros can attest to the fact that I didn't even talk to him until after the decision was made. You know, I wanted to educate myself further again on energy alliances and find out what we would expect coming. And so that was the nature of my reaching out to his company.
And then, so when was the decision actually made as to which aggregator? And I don't know who to ask the question to.
I'd have to pull up a calendar. Mr. Tarazi didn't know for sure, but it roughly corresponds to the recommendation that you saw prior to the last meeting.
Okay, so when you had the meeting with Ms. Vermillion on 3/10, had the decision been made yet?
No.
Okay. So you were still in the middle of interviewing the various aggregators?
I think I'd have to, again, look at the calendar. We may have talked to all of them by then, but we hadn't necessarily had follow-up conversations.
I can say that when I spoke to you, Dan, you did say to me, I believe we're leaning toward energy alliances. At that point, you were leaning, the staff was leaning that way. Again, I didn't know who Energy Alliances was.
Okay. And then there was another email where basically Ms. Vermillion is saying, hey, I don't want the option of two options at the same time. I don't want green and brown, I just want green, and I don't want, and she didn't think that it was appropriate to even be considered, and it was a question to Phil, et cetera. That opinion from Phil, email on the topic, didn't get forwarded to council. Is there a reason why that didn't get forwarded?
First of all, I want to interrupt and clarify that I at no time was directing Dan and staff to not give brown energy as an option.
Mr. Chair.
If you read...
One person talk at a time.
Vice President's out of order. I'm calling order.
Okay, I understand. Go ahead and finish, Ms. Vermillion.
Okay. And I'll read verbatim here what I wrote, because I wrote to our law director, asking him to clarify, because I just wanted to make sure that how we proceeded was legal and in keeping with what we passed, what the voters passed. Okay, so I'm protecting the rights of our voters. So what I said was, I'm confirming that you will, this is to Dan, I'm confirming that you will present the program as I have stated above if, if Phil, Phil Hartman, agrees that we must comply with what the voters passed. In prior conversations, you mentioned council making a decision regarding the brown energy aggregation component. But I am suggesting that this option is not in keeping with the will of the voters and it should not even be an option in our opt-out program. So, yes, if you're not reading this carefully, it sounds like I'm just saying no brown energy, but my concern here was to follow the will of the voters. Once Mr. Hartman responded to me and said, actually, it is. It's okay to offer that second option. This is what I responded after Mr. Hartman's email. I said, thank you so much, Phil. This was gnawing at me, and I'm comfortable with your legal opinion on this. Dan, I'm putting this to rest. Thanks for your patience, okay? I was ensuring that we were following the will of the voters as they passed issue 35. It was not that I was trying to manipulate city staff, manipulate what went to council, none of that.
Okay. Well, the issue with this is, again, going back to our all of the deliberation, oh, why wasn't the opinion shared with the rest of council? I was just curious about that.
Honestly, going back, I didn't know if that, when I replied, it was probably reply all and council may not have been on it. But if I would have agreed with her opinion, I would have sent it to all of council. But what I was basically confirming was everything you guys have already been presented with and say, no, it's appropriate the way it is. As long as the language for the green is the opt-out language, we can provide a brown energy alternative. I look at it as it's no different than an individual can opt out anytime by going to the AEP site and picking whatever they want. We're just providing a shortcut to do that and providing an easier reference instead of looking at 30 or 40. If you guys have actually looked at the site, it's a bit complicated. So I didn't think that it was germane for all of council since nobody else had questioned me whether what we were already proposing was legal or not.
I think the issue from my perspective is that I had asked back in November of last year about brown aggregation as an option, and I was told legal opinion that it couldn't be done. And so now this was a, and I understand it was slightly different of a question. I understand every question's a little different. But it would be helpful if you're providing legal opinions to provide them to all of council so that we all are on the same page.
Yeah, I understand.
And it doesn't generate concern that special, some council members are getting certain legal opinions and other council members are getting different legal opinions.
I'm sure I can go back and find emails. I've gone back and forth with other council members and where it was just you. So I don't think there's any favoritism being played. It was a simple question about what's legal and what's not. The question you were asking about brown energy is whether we could opt out or opt in to brown energy. This is not an opting in, it's just providing an option. If you don't, if you want to opt out, here's another selection, the brown energy, instead of going out and trying to figure out on your own the 30 different things you can look at.
Right.
Isn't that opt-in?
I, well, just to be clear, what I was asking about as another option was whether or not you could do a brown. At the time, I was thinking, in addition to the green, can you do brown, but take the money savings and apply it into an account to buy actual green, you know, solar panels in Hilliard? Like, that's what I was trying to see. Can we aggregate for purposes of actually buying green technology in the city of Hilliard versus the certificates kind of thing? And I was told, no, we couldn't because it can only be the one. And then this is a little different, which is fine. But the point of all this is, is that it's, let's try to share it with everybody so we're all stay on the same page, so that, you know, moving forward.
Yep, I will happily do that. I generally try to do that. I apologize that council feels like...
All right, did you have a question?
I got a thought. You know, Councilwoman Cottone brought up the point that the community's will, the people, and Vice President Vermillion's brought this up, that the aggregation doesn't necessarily create a cost savings. And I couldn't find anywhere in any of the materials that was presented that showed that there was any disclosure that this would raise the residents' rates or could raise the residents' rates. And that's kind of, that's kind of one of the things that I'm looking at as we look through all this. Everyone's rates are going to go up in the next couple of months. The Columbus program's already started and people are up in arms because their rates are being jacked up. And so I guess the question I have is, I'm not sure I agree with the premise that the folks that voted for aggregation didn't have some expectation that their rates were going to be lower.
Well, I can only tell you that every person I spoke to, and I was very clear, I said, there is no, this is not about saving money. That's the first thing I said to everybody I talked to. And most people, they said, okay. And some people said, am I going to save money? I said, I can't, I don't know. That's not what this is about.
And so the question becomes is, are you willing to raise rates for this based on this? And it sounds like, I read Councilmember Vermillion's email differently than she has just portrayed it. It looked like to me she didn't want brown energy on there at all. And so I think we have an obligation to the community to try to do best to save money when we're about ready to get smacked with a, what was it, 31% or 28% increase? I think we ought to do everything we can to lower that. And that's just something I wanted to talk about. But I got a question for the gentleman. What's the difference between the brown rate and the green rate right now? If we were going today, what's the difference in the kilowatt per hour?
So on the, so we talked about cents per k, you know, so it's somewhere around, that's about 0.1 to 0.4 cents to the price. So if the non-brown, let's say, I'm sorry, if the non-renewable was seven cents, if we did the renewable, it would be somewhere around 7.1 to 7.4, depending on the type of renewable that was added.
So it's not a huge difference currently right now?
Is that for your first year out whenever the rates are subsidized, or is that for years two and three?
So that would be locked in for years two and three. So if we would add the, you know, with the renewable, that's, again, right now, if it was the 0.1 or 0.4 adder, that would be fixed for the entire length of time.
So maybe I misunderstood. I thought last session, whenever we had the presentation, we knew that for the first year, we would have a subsidized rate, and then after that, it would change for years two and three. Is that not accurate?
Now, we would look to lock in a price for some length of time. So if it was 24 months, it would be that same price across the 24 months.
Okay, so while the non-renewable energy could fluctuate, the renewable energy will stay consistent?
They would both be, they would both be constant, yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so at the time, somebody would get a letter, you know, it would say, you know, the renewable portion would be at X price, and it would be that price until the term ends. And then if there was a brown option, the brown option would be at Y price, and they would be at that Y price until the end of term. They don't change throughout.
Okay, but then you're assessing every quarter to see if you could renegotiate a rate if there is a big change in the market?
Yeah, if, yep.
Thank you for being redundant. I need to...
It's, no, it's fine.
Is there another question?
I just had a point of clarification. For the information that we put out to the public on this, we did note that there would be, there could be fluctuation in prices under the sort of frequently asked questions. It says, is participation guaranteed to save money? Electrical prices constantly fluctuate, and economics of green energy production are different than coal and natural gas-based production. So there's no guarantee how Hilliard's negotiated bulk rate for sustainable electricity will perform over time compared to the price individuals will pay on the open market. By leveraging the power of aggregation and negotiating prices, we would be seeking the most competitive rate possible for the sustainably sourced electricity. I attended only one of the open public meetings, but that was a point in the slides as well, so we could pull those up too. But it was, you know, we know that there's a chance that, a good chance that the green energy is going to be more expensive than the brown going out now. But I think as Rich stated, right now, with AEP's prices being so high, there's a good chance that both of these will be, the green and the brown, somewhat lower than current AEP rates.
If I may, I'll just add one other detail to this, and I know it goes back a number of months, but Mr. Hartman's colleague, Stephen Smith, presented to this council about Grove City's experiences with the aggregation issue. And one of the points that was made during that meeting was that their ballot language actually had two different goals, one being price and the other being essentially some green energy components to it as well. And they really, really struggled with how to wrestle, how to make a determination when the pricing came back, because they had both of those objectives in their ballot language. And we, in our own ballot language that you all approved, and obviously the voters approved, only have one of those objectives. It's the green energy objective in that actual ballot language. And that was, I think, done with intention because of some of the discussions we had regarding Grove City's language.
I have another question for Mr. Hartman. You said right now that the largest city that you've aggregated is 25,000 and we're closer to 40. So once, you know, if this is approved tonight and you start to aggregate, I assume you'll be able to see other cities' rates for our size of cities?
And when I said 25, that's the number of, a number of accounts and homes. So you have, so, I mean, we deal with plenty of communities that are the size of Hilliard per homes or more. So, yeah, population-wise, I mean, you find here in Ohio, it's roughly two and a half people per home. So, again, as far as, as far as the size of the community, I mean, you know, this is definitely a community that we work with. I mean, we have some of the largest townships and cities in southwest Ohio that are tens of thousands of people, just like Hilliard.
Okay, sorry, I was confused on the 25,000 number. I thought that was population. Thank you.
Yeah, number of participants, you know, or eligible homes, we'll call it.
I know we used some anticipated numbers when we spoke. What was that for Hilliard as households?
That would have been for, yeah, that would have been for households.
On 10,000?
Yeah, I think that's...
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else had questions on this side? All right, go ahead.
This one's really for Mr. Rowley. How do we, this provider is like not the cheapest one per kilowatt. We're paying them how much per kilowatt when we do this? What's the compensation for this broker?
I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but it's roughly going to equate to $60,000 a year.
And they were like third or fourth on the list, right, in terms of cost to the city? The Grove City guys were the lowest. And then there was one more, and then there were these folks. How did we get to these folks? What was the criteria you used to come to that conclusion?
Sure, I think it's like any other professional service that we engage in. So similar to engineers or architects, it's not only price, but it's also the quality of service, the level of service that we can expect to be, receive from that vendor. In this case, we received really strong recommendations from some of our peer communities around central Ohio. There was a higher level of assistance that was being offered with some of the regulatory things that we knew that we were going to be embarking on. And that differs from what Grove City has done with their broker.
And then the only other question I have to make sure I'm clear on this process and what happened behind in these meetings that went on. At any time, were you directed by any member of council as to their preferences to what vendor they would have chose? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I think I have two questions. One, actually, I've heard from other council members that there was actual preferences as to which, that Cynthia Vermillion wanted a different one than the one chosen.
Mr. Carrier used the word directed.
Oh, directed, okay.
No point was there direction given by council members.
Okay, so what, explain then, non-direction but preferences expressed as to other providers that should have been picked or whatever?
There certainly were questions about other providers that were asked and why not this one. And we went through that, I think, in a meeting that you were actually in attendance at, that there were concerns or there... that there were concerns, or there were differences between those brokers, that I, in a meeting, joint meeting with you and Councilmember Vermillion, along with the city manager.
I'm sorry, which meeting are you referring to?
When I was invited to one of the city manager update meetings where this very topic was discussed toward the end of that meeting.
I don't think President Tarazi was able to attend that meeting.
Were you not on the phone for that meeting?
I don't know what you're talking about. I don't know when you're talking about it, but, so if you can, I can look at my schedule or whatnot, I don't know what you're talking about.
It was one of our Tuesday meetings, I believe, and I.
Was that the Tuesday meeting that I sent a text message saying, hey, I can't make it, can you reschedule?
No, this was a different, a different one. Maybe you were on remotely at the beginning, and this was a conversation after the meeting, but I, I don't remember you being in, in the room for this particular conversation.
Okay. So I think to me that there's two issues. One, I don't mind if people have opinions as to green, brown, whatever, that's what we're here for. We can disagree on political issues, make votes, and move on. I just want to make sure, I disagree with the idea, because even you have mentioned that there's, there's very sensitive when council members interject into talking to developers or talking to people, particularly in the decision moment, and, and start expressing, and having private meetings with staff and things like that, that's where it gets really, it opens up questions. I mean, I know that representation is, nothing inappropriate happened, no inappropriate pressure, but it creates a, a cloud over things that I think it's better practice not to do it that way, moving forward.
As you can tell, we did not select the broker that Councilmember Vermillion was hoping would be, or was, had a, had somewhat of a preference for, or met with. So she can express her opinions, just like any other council member can with anything. There was no private meetings happening where there was some negotiation going on or pressure from a council member. It was just an expression of an opinion. And, you know, staff is going to go through our professional process whenever we select anyone like this, a broker, or an architect, or an engineering firm, or anything of that nature. And we're not going to succumb to any outside influences at all, whether it's a council member or someone else. We're going to go through that process and bring forward to council what we think is the best selection for any professional service. So don't appreciate our reputation being questioned in this process at all.
Well, I think the issue is, is had there been upfront transparency, rather than waiting until having to force public records requests, and then only after public records requests, then it become, oh yeah, we had meetings, and oh yeah, this is the explanation. It would have been much more straightforward if it had just been said upfront, rather than this sort of, like, it gives the appearance of gamesmanship. And particularly when we've just had Householder and things like that in the State House, the last thing we need on energy aggregation and any kind of political interference in a decision tree as it relates to who gets picked by the city. So there's a heightened, and you're asking for us today to vote on this, and whether, what, how, and we didn't have anything unless we asked for a public records request. So that's where trans, greater transparency would have avoided all this whole conversation.
Having conversations with council members, I, I don't understand, what, what level of transparency do you want? Do you want notes from every single meeting that I have with a council member and what was discussed?
No, I'm saying when the city staff is right there interviewing people for picking, and you've got council members with a specific opinion on who should be chosen, who shouldn't be chosen, having private meetings, and now you're saying, trust us, and there was no, you know, no pressure worked, or whatever, that's, that's not open to the public. That's not what you're asking us to vote on here today.
I, I don't know what you're asking for. I mean, we didn't do anything that was inappropriate. We went through our process like, like we would have with any other.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, I'll get you.
I've had my hand raised longer than Mr. Carrier.
Fine, go ahead. I didn't see you. I looked several times, but I didn't see you.
Are you, go right there.
Thank you. First of all, how dare you compare the situation to the Householder situation, where there was bribery involved and, and other factors? Secondly, early on in the process, I was told by staff that this was specifically their job to pick the aggregator, and I respected that. I never tried to influence anyone in the meetings. I asked a lot of questions. As you know, I, I'm a question asker, and so I do ask a lot of questions. I never thought to direct staff, you have to pick the person I talk to. And I only talked to that one person who, again, reached out to us, to everybody, on November 10th of 2022, and I bothered to respond to that email. So I am just really offended that you would lump us in that same bribery-ridden scandal that happened in the Ohio State House.
What I said was, is that having politicians directly in the middle of the room, essentially right in that moment when people are deciding, is not best practice.
Was I in the, in the room in, right when they were making their decision?
It's the exact timeframe. You're meeting with both sides in the exact same timeframe when the decision's being made. So I think that was inappropriate. Now you could.
And that's incorrect information, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, let's, go ahead, Ms. Carrier.
I think, to Ms. Crandall's point on the, the, and to your point, President Tarazi, I think one of the things that would have been pretty helpful for this whole process is when we, when you asked Mr. Rowley if any other council members had provided information or been a part of the process of the presentation that Mr. Rowley presented in the last meeting, just being more open and transparent about that might have helped the whole situation. And you can use the latest example that I just, just asked, Mr. Rowley, did anyone direct that a certain vendor should be used? Okay, I asked it that way, and you answered it, but you probably could have gone that next step and said, hey, there were a lot of meetings that took place, and there was a lot of parties that discussed things. But you didn't do that. When, when Councilman Tarazi asked you at the last meeting, was anyone involved, we got a smile and a sly remark, and everybody kind of walked away going, what happened? What's going on? And that's what precipitated a lot of the public records requests and then information, because we knew we weren't getting the whole biscuit. We weren't getting the whole basket. So, you know, our role here is very difficult sometimes, and this information is very complex. And I just, I, I agree with the president that it would have been a lot easier if that question would have been answered a lot differently in the last meeting. But it wasn't. It was just a little smile and a sly remark that, oh no, there was nothing, no, nobody, nobody was involved in the presentation itself, the PowerPoint. So, you know, I, I think that, I think that's where we had some breakdown.
I don't call one or two meetings a lot of meetings. I'm quoting you. You just said, I had a lot of meetings. I did not have a lot of meetings.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
So I guess my, something that concerned me about this was that, until I read the public records request, I didn't know that there was an option for the brown energy aggregation until I saw Phil's legal response, because I had never heard that presented in any presentation that wasn't, and maybe I missed it, but it wasn't, I didn't pick up on it in the last presentation. And it sounds like, Mr. Hartman, that wasn't on his radar tonight either. He was only aware of the green energy aspect. Because we just said, you know, are you going to do brown energy? And he says, well, I forget the exact wording, but green energy was the only one that was mentioned. Do you want to clarify what you'd said? It's on the record, but we'll.
No, I can, I can answer that. So we found out during the interview processes with these brokers that there were a couple of them that offered that. They would go out to the market for the green, also look at the brown, and offer both. So we became aware of it during the process. When you'll see that is when they bring back the pricing. So that's when, so it, it was fairly new to us as we went through this process. We're learning a lot during this process. So it, it wasn't, our staff recommendation is if the brown energy looks good and pricing, then yes, you should definitely offer that to your residents as an option. If they want to get out of the green and go into the brown, they should have that option. So that was always going to be our recommendation, but we're not to that point in the process yet where we're bringing back that pricing, so.
I super appreciate that, though, giving the public the option. I think, just for transparency, I think, I think that that's something the public would want to know. I haven't done a poll, but I appreciate it coming out now, so thank you.
We weren't holding back on this at all. There's this, you know, overtone that somehow we're keeping information. We, we became aware of it. We had every intent to bring back the pricing for it.
Yeah, we had looked at this when it had come up in a couple of meetings. I was in every interview, and it was only staff that was in those meetings. And I was in the meeting where we met, I think it was the beginning of March, I think it was March 6th or something, where we chose, we debated the merits of all of them, and it was only staff. The other thing that I think needs clarified, the brown energy is not, it, it's not automatic like the green energy is. If you don't do anything, you're in the green energy. Brown energy is opt-out. It, it provides, like I said, you've got to choose to go, okay, this number looks better, I want that. And you can do that already, if you just go to the website, because quite frankly, I was, my eyes were open when you meet with these guys. I looked at my rates, and I was getting chatted pretty hard on one of them. And it's amazing, I mean, it's a great educational process, but that's how I learned the whole thing and went through a bunch of the, you know, other ones I could have opted into, which I did, yeah.
I think we're all learning.
That's fair. Any other questions? All right, so since there's no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll on 23-R-22?
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
No.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Pass six one.
All right, I forgot, Mr. Marsh. The resolution 23-R has passed and will be effective at the early state allowable by law. All right, will the clerk please read 23-R-23 by title only?
Authorizing the reallocation of funds and the purchase of Microsoft 365 E3 software.
Is there a council member who'd like to sponsor and adopt?
I'll second.
Motioned and seconded, go ahead.
Good evening, members of council. The legislation before you does two things. The reallocation of funds from the 2023 capital budget and authorizing to enter into an agreement with ExTech Partners for the purchase of 400 Microsoft 365 E3 licenses. The total amount for this purchase is 155,700. These funds were appropriated within the capital budget to be utilized for the mobile 3-on-1 software replacement. Following discussions with the Operations Division and Director Lester, staff has determined that the Operations Division's process improvement documentation and needs assessment would not be completed this year. Therefore, this legislation will permit the funds to be reallocated to cover the expanded Microsoft licensing cost. The IT department has reviewed the bids through the Ohio State Term Contract and determined the purchase, purchase from a private vendor, ExTech Partners, was more cost-effective as demonstrated in the summary included in your packet. The benefits that we're trying to accomplish here is twofold. One, with this new license, we can do two-factor on the Microsoft product line itself. We can't necessarily do that for all of our vendors, or all of our users, I'm sorry. In order to hold costs down, we are limited under our existing licensing to only a maximum of 300 users. We're well beyond that. Council themselves, boards and commissions, part-time employees, use a basic license that's web access only. We cannot two-factor that license, so it will require us to go above that 300 amount. And this is a substantial increase in cost in what we're doing. But based on some of the activities that are happening in the internet today, I think it's prudent that we move forward. Any questions?
I do. So under the staff recommendations, last paragraph, it says that this new software will satisfy the criminal justice information services policy requirements. When did they put those requirements into effect, do you know?
When did the, the CGIS requirements?
Mm-hmm.
Gosh, they've been around for quite some time. The NIST, recent, NIST is probably the newest one, that went into effect with the federal government last year in July. So any vendor doing business with the federal government is required to be NIST compliant. That's why we've, as, as a city, has started those processes and went through NIST audits ourselves. Not that we're feder, federal vendors, but that is a standard that's being set. So for us, we want to keep moving forward and, and increasing our security profile so that we can meet that standard.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll? Did we sponsor and adopt this one first? Yeah, okay. Will the clerk, I'm sorry, just want to make sure I got it all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
All right, resolution 23-R-23 has passed and will be effective at the early state allowable by law. All right, staff reports. There's one staff report on the Flock Safety Group, Chief Woods.
Good evening, members of council. This, this is information to, just to update you on information that was included in our operating budget for a Flock safety camera system throughout the city. So we're ready to enter into a subscript, oh, my computer's going away, a subscription agreement with Flock Safety that'll provide 11 cameras at locations throughout the city, and then the software for us to review those, to look for vehicles, to conduct investigations, and, and then put information in if we're looking for a car that's been used in a crime. I can answer any questions that you have.
Go ahead.
How come it doesn't include facial recognition?
It's just not part of that system. This, this is vehicle information, vehicle description only. It's, it's not set up to do facial recognition. It can't do that, and it won't do that.
Do we have a system that'll do that?
We do not know.
When's that coming?
You know, that's, that's a different, that's a different technology and a different discussion. This is something that we think, based on some of the crime that we've had in the city, that this would help a couple ways. First, help us investigate it.
Right.
When we get a vehicle that's coming into our city, last year, we experienced a few stolen cars coming in and targeting some youth at our pools. When that vehicle's coming into our city, it'll alert us, so we can get there before the crime happens. Unfortunately, if a crime does happen, we can then look for vehicle tag, vehicle make, model, color, to investigate that. And then we're hoping, once, once the bad guy knows that we have this, that they'll reduce the times they come into our city.
Do you think this software will reduce the amount that the officers, the street officers have? Because the last time I was in a ride-along, we were punching, he was punching numbers into that laptop the whole time.
So it doesn't just run tags randomly. What it does is it looks at tags and compares that to information on NCIC, the National Crime Information Center, or tags that we put in, or other agencies have put in on a hot list. So it's not just randomly running tags. It's only looking and comparing those that are in the, in the system already, or something that we put into it.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Cool.
So it sounds like it does this real-time, is that correct?
Yeah, so it's, it's, I'm sure there's some type of a, a little bit of a delay, but going from running the tag, getting the information in, comparing it, and then sending it back out, but the officers can get an alert in their vehicle to the location, the camera that it hit on, and then if it hits on another camera as well.
Okay, do you know the time lapse between?
I don't, I mean, it's, it's like anything that's moving in a mobile environment, sometimes weather impacts that, traffic on a system, you know, there's only so much broadband space on it, so it's fairly quickly. We do know that, excuse me, from other agencies that we've spoke with. It is fast, we just know that there can be a, a second or two, maybe up to 10 seconds or something, that there's a delay. So it's not minutes, as long as there's not a technical issue.
Okay, and then, so you said cars that are involved in a crime, but would that also be Amber Alerts and missing persons?
Amber Alert, Silver Alerts, there's a Blue Alert for someone, if a police officer was, was injured somewhere. So all that information comes through if a serious crime, it's not all misdemeanors are involved in that, but anything that's serious enough to be into NCIC, or a stolen vehicle, or a person that's wanted out of a crime, those are the information that make it into NCIC, and then would get the alert if it came into our city.
Okay, and is this tied into CityLab at all, or is this?
No, this is kind of independent from that, but we do get to, we don't get to see the other cameras, but we can interface and, and speak with other agencies. but we can interface and, and speak with other agencies in other cities that have this. So that if we know Upper Arlington has them, for instance, if they've got a burglary suspect and they have that tag information, they put it into the system. If it hits in Hilliard, Arlington would be made aware of that, as would we.
And this is a procedure question, but if, like, Upper Arlington does have a tag that's involved in a crime, do they enter that in, like, would the officer on scene enter that in, like, so it's pretty quick, or?
Well, yeah, it's, it's through the investigation. So if, if a burglary happened and a detective went out, obtained some information, maybe a ring, doorbell, or something, and they were able to get that tag, they put that into the system. It creates what we call the hot list. So that if Arlington saw it, we saw it, Whitehall, one of the cities that have Flock cameras, we would be notified of that.
And then once a tag is entered into the system, does it stay there until that car?
It's there until they pull it back out. So the investigation's concluded, and it comes back out. Any tag that we do run only stays in there for 30 days. That, if it doesn't come up with one of those hits, it automatically purges after 30 days.
Okay, lots of questions. Thank you.
You know, we think right now what we want to do is, is we want to see how they work.
Dee's yelling at me. Sorry, let me re-ask. You have 11 cameras now. Do you need more?
What we're going to do is we're going to take a look at 11 cameras and evaluate that. We've strategically placed those at, at egress points into the city, at places where we think cars would get on the freeway to get out of the city if they committed a crime. So 11 is a good number to start with. We'll evaluate that after a year and kind of go from there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Ms. Crandall, any updates?
No updates.
Okay, so for items for council discussion, everybody should have the statement. I wanted to read on volunteerism. Cynthia, if you would, or Ms. Vermillion, would you like to start us off?
Okay. Volunteering is a willing act of an individual or group freely giving time and labor for community service. April is National Volunteer Month, and April 16th through the 22nd, 2023, is National Volunteer Week, which was first established in 1974 by presidential proclamation.
We would like to take this opportunity to recognize the impact and power of individuals to tackle society's greatest challenges, to build stronger communities, and be a force that transforms the world.
Volunteering weaves us together, strengthening the fabric of our community by sharing time, talent, and energy to support one another.
The collective result of the work done by our city's volunteers is that the city of Hilliard is a more desirable place to live by creating social and economic value for all.
Local volunteers mentor our children, support those feeling isolated, beautify our green spaces, serve on boards and commissions, help city events run more smoothly, and fundraise for many charitable organizations.
Each year during National Volunteer Week, we shine a light on the people and causes that inspire this selflessness by recognizing and thanking volunteers who lend their time, talent, and voice to make a difference in this country and in our Hilliard community.
We encourage all residents to observe National Volunteer Week by seeking out opportunities in our community to vote, to devote a few hours or more to volunteer service. Thank you, Hilliard volunteers.
Yay. All right. So with this, I would entertain a motion and second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you very much.